The floor is yours.
Great. Well, thank you all very much. For those of you who just joined the board, congratulations. I wish you all the best. Just by way of introduction, my name is Jeff Ziplo, one of the principals at CLA. To my left is Lindsay Intrieri, one of our managers, who also worked on the project, as well as Aaron Perillo to my right, one of our senior analysts who worked on this project as well. This project, and I think you all have a copy of the presentation and the report, we were asked to take a look at, and let me advance. There we go. Okay. We were asked to, and were engaged, to do a comprehensive assessment in taking a look at the budget process overall, take a look at the budget process for special ed, how you handle grants, and the overall financial operations for 22, 23, and 23, 24. We've completed that engagement. We had, as part of our objectives, we wanted to take a look at any unusual type of activities. Equally important to this overall project is, how did we get to an over-budget situation within the Board of Ed, within the school district? Taking a look at and assessing various controls, again, the budget overages, and then other potential risks that through our interviews, walkthroughs, and discussions with the management team identify, you know, what risks still exist and what risks need to be mitigated for the future. So, in the report, and we're going to go through this in certainly more detail, we wanted to provide what our findings were, what caused the budget overages, and as well as provide, you know, some recommendations so that hopefully it doesn't happen again. Fair? So, my thought process is, we're going to go through the presentation, and if you don't mind, let us get through the presentation, and then we'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have. Okay? Great. Lindsay?
So, our full report certainly expands on all of this, but for the purposes of tonight, we kind of abbreviated. But to start the project, Aaron and I came onsite with the district, and we sat with the team in finance and some other department heads for a couple of days to kind of walk through all of the in-scope financial processes. So, the first one is, we talked about, how are we building the budget? How are we monitoring the budget? And that process, under the new superintendent, has kind of changed pretty drastically. It's really now a collaborative process where department heads are compiling their budget requests, and they're looking at prior year's expenditures. They're asked to prioritize all of their requests in terms of what's a short term versus a long term. They present that to Cabinet, and then Cabinet kind of workshops it through with the department heads to see what's realistic for short term versus long term, to prioritize and map the budget for the next few years. So, we found a really good structured annual budgeting process. The second area that we talked about was budget transfers. So, for a budget amendment request to go through right now, it's going to require approval from both the business office and the superintendent before going before the board. Any line item transfer requests for the fiscal year do get approved by the finance committee. Transfers to execute budget amendments are done right now at the end of the journal, or at the end of the fiscal year via journal entries. The other processes we walked through was purchasing. So, right now, purchasing requisitions route through a number of approvals before they're executed. It's going to include department heads, the business managers. If it's grants, it's going to go through the grants person. If it has a special education or a pupil services implication, it's going to go through that department as well. And then the funds get reserved or encumbered within your financial system to make sure that they're available and essentially put on hold or locked until the purchase order goes through. On the payable side, we kind of walked through, how are we paying for invoices? Right now, there's invoice matching, approval, and electronic check issuance to maintain fiscal discipline and accountability. Again, with the relevant departments that are in scope, if it's pupil services, they're going to review any incoming invoices and bills to make sure that they make sense for their department. Same with the grants department, if it's applicable. And then with those, you have the director or the grants manager signing off on anything that's relevant to their department before it's paid. Thank you. Okay. So, then we talked about special education and grants management. And in our experience, these are, these are big budget areas and big implications in terms of how spending and dollars are allocated throughout the year. So, we walked through these processes as well, just for good controls and efficiency. So, as far as in-district programs, and what we're talking about here is really the Eagle Academy. The district manages a lot of their special education sort of in-house or in-district with tailored instruction and support for diverse student needs, all within Eagle Academy. So, it does say in the full report that the outplacement rate at the state is about 6% on average, whereas here, we're at 2.5%. So, I think that's really worth noting in our work. We do a lot of assessments of special education and costs associated with it, and Enfield is really keeping a lot of those costs in-house compared to what they could be. As far as Eagle Academy goes, when you're taking students from other districts in, it's about $70,000 to $77,000 per student coming into the district based on their needs and services. So, then we talked about the students that are outplaced. And right now, every outplaced special education student has an associated contract that's going to dictate their tuition, any additional OTPT therapeutic services that they're receiving, the associated transportation costs and so forth. And then what the district is doing is creating a blanket purchase order, which is kind of like a big hold for all the funds that they anticipate spending on that student for the year, based on the terms of the contract. As I mentioned earlier, when the bills come in, someone within pupil services is looking at the invoice or the bill and saying, okay, based on this student, does this align with what we've agreed to in the contract? So, there is that control in place. Also, relative to special education is trends in enrollment. So, recently, there's been significant and unanticipated increases in special education costs. And most of this happens when you have high-need students or families moving into the district mid-year, right? The budget's already been set, and then we have some high-cost students that come in. So, in Enfield's case, in 2024, we had 27 high-need special education students join the district post-budget, right, which resulted in an additional $1.8 million, unbudgeted, unexpected, and sort of after the start of the school year. So, in general, we've got outplacement costs rising faster than we're increasing our budget. The other area we looked at was grants compliance and oversight. The district has a dedicated grants manager who tracks all the spending and makes sure that grants are compliant using the state system, which is EGMS, and also ERP systems, which is Tyler Muniz in-house here. Anytime there's a grant, it gets set up in your financial system. And there's a new practice now where the district is not setting up or spending against a grant until there is a grant award letter in hand. Okay. Other areas that are, you know, high costs to school districts would certainly be payroll and personnel. So, we talked about how are we budgeting for personnel and accounting for changes and so forth. So, right now, the salaries are encumbered for teachers, certified staff, non-certified staff, so forth, as soon as the school year starts. So, when we know what the salaries are going to be, we're reserving those funds, again, similar to what we were doing with the blankets earlier. Position control is a module within the financial system that you have right now. It's in the process of being set up, but for the time being, the employee positions are managed through Excel. So, the director, the HR director and the business manager meet weekly to review all the FTEs. They look at, you know, upcoming retirements, position changing, changes, what are the dollar implications for movements from one position or one step in grade and so forth. We will make recommendations later in the report to kind of push through with the software capabilities, because there are system capabilities to automate a lot of that within the system that you have. It just has to be configured and updated. So, after we walked through all of the kind of major budget areas, we dug into fiscal 23, 24 budget overages, which you'll see in the full report and summarized here. It was kind of a, an accumulation of a number of things, right? Mainly, the unreceived alliance district funding. So, the district was notified February 2022 that for 2023, they would be considered an alliance district. And with that would come $1.4 million in '23 and 2024, for a total of $2.8 million over two years. So, given this sort of declaration of becoming an alliance district, the district calculated that they would get 2% of their needed 2.31% budget increase from those alliance district funds. And so, as the budget process went on, the town budgeted to reduce their funding to the district to reflect the alliance dollars that were going to be coming in. June 2022 happened, and the district was notified that they would not get the funding. At this point, the budget's already set. So, then the district had calculated a 3.96 budget increase necessary for fiscal '24. The budget, again, was built on the anticipation of the $1.4 million alliance district money. And that money didn't come through either, right? So, no alliance monies were ever received from the state. And so, you had the shortfall for '23, and again, for '24, where you had two budgets that accounted for dollars that never arrived. So, on top of that, as, as an alliance district, the district would be eligible to apply for capital project reimbursements. Fairly confident that they were going to receive the money, the district spent 1.7 on capital projects in 2023. And this would have been 1.7 that theoretically they could have applied for reimbursement from the state as being declared an alliance district. When they were informed in July 2022, they were denied the construction grant through the alliance money. Again, now you're 1.7 additionally short. The district fully utilized its contingency funds, in addition to any remaining COVID relief funds, to help with the 2023 shortages. So, another element that we noted was confusion around this town fund transfer. So, there was a $2.5 million transfer from the town's stiff account into a school district payroll account. And so, the monies were incorrectly deposited into the school district's payroll account, and it was called, like, paid-in-surplus-redemption-state-of-Connecticut or something fairly ambiguous, which was confusing to the district. And they did do a bit of work and contacted the state and tried to figure out what these monies were. Their belief at the time was that this was to make up for not receiving the alliance funding, and that this was state dollars to the district. So, they were misled in thinking that they were really going to have a budget issue, because they believed this was their $2.5 million. In reality, this was an unrelated mistake and had nothing to do with the alliance district conversation at all. So, you couple that with additional special education students moving into the district. As I mentioned earlier, that was 27 students for $1.8 million for that year. And then we have excess cost funding shortfalls in addition to that. So, for fiscal '24, the district calculated their excess cost funding to be around 91%, based on what the state had said. In reality, you know, school districts hardly ever are getting the 91%. And this is not unique to Enfield, right? We come across this in any school district with excess cost calculations. So, we budgeted for 91%, but we got 64% to 75%, right? So, then you're adding to the already existing shortfall. And then lastly, a point here, 2023 also had an unfunded state mandate where the state required boards of ed to provide special education services to students until age 22. In the past, it was age 21. And so, theoretically, you've got another whole year of special education costs that you didn't plan on. So, that's the 23, 24 summary. And then we just did some additional kind of overall budget analysis.
Yeah.
That I'll let Eric talk to.
So, as we went through all of the interviews and discussion with all of the staff at Board of Ed and some of the town staff as well, what we wanted to do is kind of substantiate some of those numbers with looking back at actual dollars spent. So, we went back, in some cases, three years, working through budget to actual expenditures, what were the budgets, what were the grants, what were the special education amounts, what were the transfers, were there any trends, were there anything that we could see that either A substantiated what we saw as far as what we heard, or trends in the process overall that we wanted to bring up and highlight and point out. Part of it is, in this first slide here, as we looked through in fiscal year 2024, there were a number of accounts that were either unbudgeted for or under-budgeted for during the year, which is what led to part of the budget shortfall in fiscal year 2024. When we look through the next couple reports, through the next three years' worth of budgets, there were accounts on both sides, and what we put up here is all the accounts that had a shortfall for three years. Similarly, there were a bunch of accounts that had over-budgeted amounts for four years. But in the budget process, what was happening is, accounts were increasing by your budget amount, but were never really meeting your expenditure amounts, or they were continuing to increase it but never being fully spent. So, you had a handful of accounts that you can see here that every year, they were over-budgeted. So, for the three years of average budget appropriations, in the first line, you can see you were averaging $8.4 million of health and medical insurance, but every year, you were spending about $10.8 million of expenses. And those trends followed through the three years. It was always under-budgeted. Similarly, you had accounts that were over-budgeted, where you were appropriating $600,000 and spending $200,000 a year consistently, year over year. As we go through and talk later in our recommendations, we talk about the budget process and how to kind of correct that going forward, and how to use budget transfers to create expenditure amounts before you actually spend the money, so that you aren't spending money before you've actually appropriated it to that line item. Go on to the next one?
Yes.
So, in the last part of it, and where we see a lot of shortfalls, is within the special education budgets, because of the variability and volatility within those accounts with what students can cost going to outplacements, and what can happen if just a couple of kids move into the district, we see shortfalls in the special education budgets. What we saw here is that leading up until 2024, while there were some accounts that were under-budgeted, there were similar accounts over-budgeted in the special education budget up until '24, pretty much balanced out each year. They weren't purposely under-budgeting it or looking to try and cover their costs in that area. In '24, with what Lindsay talked about, and having extra kids move into the district, having excess costs come in, that was a year that there was a shortfall. But it was all items that were out of the school district's control that kind of happened during that year. It wasn't because of how it was budgeted.
So, our full report gives a bit more meat to findings and recommendations for improvement, but they are summarized here. Firstly, you know, we had findings around a need for increased communication and collaboration between the town and the school district as far as budget status, budget development, and budget transparency goes. Certainly, some notable communication gaps between the two entities, which caused further misunderstandings and probably led to the budget shortfall not being either an issue or something that we could get ahead of sooner than later. A perfect example of that would be that $2.5 million surplus misunderstanding. You know, in our interviews recently, I still think there's uncertainty about it, right, and feelings associated with it, and confusion, and a lack of clarity. And I think the town probably had a grasp on that, and that could have been remediated, resolved, and everybody could have moved on and budgeted around that, had that been communicated and shared internally prior. So, we make some recommendations, I think, on the next slide, about increasing communication and having ongoing meetings between the two. The second item is around inadequate budgeting. So, the way that the budget had been built was essentially built on prior year figures. Without adjustments for current year actual spending, right, as Aaron had mentioned, there's certainly some accounts where the budget is, it's not even close in some cases, that needs to be remediated. And then that results in a bunch of transfers at the end of the year. Thirdly, the finding is the tuition rate fluctuations, and also more students, right? So, again, not unique to Enfield. We are finding that with some of the outplaced contracts and outplaced students in other districts, some of these facilities are raising prices, you know, haphazardly or throughout the year, right? And that's not something that a lot of districts are planning for or expect. And so, getting hit with those costs is furthering budget challenges. And then lastly, a finding that we thought was important was really maximizing the use of the ERP system. We talked about position control earlier. There are some abilities to kind of set additional controls within the system that will prevent overspending and so forth. So, our recommendations are really kind of an inverse of what I just walked through. We talked about financial coordination meetings, regular meetings with town officials and the school district to improve transparency and coordination between the two. As far as budgeting goes, we proposed zero-based budgeting in our report, which would essentially mean building the budget based on your actual expenditures, as opposed to just, you know, increasing at a flat percentage year over year, or budgeting based on the historical allocations, right, to avoid those repeat mistakes, kind of level set, start over, and redefine your account lines. Thirdly, minimize the need for budget transfers, right? So, if we need transfers, we're thinking that they should be performed more frequently, closer to something like monthly, as opposed to dealing with all of these at the end, getting approval from both the superintendent and Board of Ed. We'd like to see the system configured to avoid letting accounts run in the negative, right, which is an easy kind of check-the-box thing that you can do in the software that you have, meaning no one's going to put in a purchase or spend dollars that don't exist in a line item without submitting a transfer, having the transfer get routed through the right people for approval, and then having the system move the dollars to accurately kind of reflect where the spending is. So, there's some further details on that in the report. As far as the outplacement contracts, we've made some recommendations with other districts to kind of budget based on rate ranges, right, where if you assume that a student could cost between, you know, X and Y, that you kind of conservatively budget for Y, knowing that some of these outplacement places are likely to increase costs mid-year. That all may change with the state. There's different conversations being had right now about state-setting, tuition placement rates and so forth, but certainly, you can budget conservatively until that takes place. And then lastly, you know, maximize those system features within your ERP system, implement position control, add in some of those overspending controls to tighten up financial processes throughout the year. And that, I think, is it?
So, with that, there's got to be one question amongst the group. So...
Thank you very much. So, before we open it up, because I know there's going to be some questions, Matt, I know that this sort of, this draft or this presentation has been sort of highly anticipated throughout the town. So, if we can get it on the website as soon as possible, easy to find, I don't, you know, put lights around it or something. So, because I know that people have been asking, and everybody's been talking about it. So, if we can get this on the website as soon as possible, it'd be great.
We'll do that.
Okay. Thank you. So, we can open it up for questions? I know there's going to be a lot. Go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate your presentation. And I was wondering if we could go back to the previous slide, number 15. And I just want to walk through some of the areas that you highlighted that were
Sure.
issues for us in the earlier part of the presentation, right? So, $1.8 million was unbudgeted from 28, new, 27 new students moving into the district after the budget was set.
Correct.
So, take in that scenario, where in, where does that problem get resolved in the set of strategic recommendations that you have here? How do we prevent that from happening again?
That unfortunately is not a preventable type of situation.
Okay.
To be honest with you.
Fair enough.
You, as well as all the other school districts in Connecticut, and we have seen this many times over, they, they have similar, they run into similar problems, to be quite frank, right? What's interesting is, you're a little bit different from the standpoint that many times, you're taking in the special needs students, and you're able to take care of them within your school district instead of outplacement. And so, I think, you know, if students come in, you have to take care of them. You're able to do it internally, rather than, most of the time, not all, instead of external. But that's not...
It's a competency that we have that others don't.
Correct.
Which means that the cost of that, of educating and caring for that student is less to us than it might be to another, another community. I'm not trying to give you gotcha questions.
No, 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 no.
I really am not. I just...
It's not something you can plan for.
Right. No, and I just, and I think that that's, that's the point, that I want people to understand that on $1.8 million
Right.
of this, it is unplanned.
Right.
Nobody could possibly foresee
No control.
That. No control.
No control.
Okay. So...
You would budget for the lifetime of the student and district. You wouldn't be budgeting for ghost students that could potentially move out.
Completely understand.
Yes.
Okay. So, that. Then, there was the $1.4 million and the $1.4 million, so $2.8 million for alliance money that we never received. Where, again, in your strategic recommendations, does that factor in as a, where would that get caught in the, in your strategic recommendations? Or would that be part of the unforeseen things? Just tell me how we would prevent that from happening?
So, in our interviews, it was pretty adamant that there is a practice now where no, no accounts are getting set up, no revenues are coming in until there is an award in hand, right? And I think a lot of the challenge with the alliance stuff was, it was truly believed that those dollars were coming in, but there was no actual, here's the dollars you're getting, here's when you're getting it. And I think it was kind of budgeted on a hope or a, right? And so, going forward, it's, we would certainly recommend no one's budgeting for anything until we have documented award letters with amounts and dates and so forth, and contracts.
Fair enough. And we're...
I just wanted to add to that.
Yeah.
I would say with the alliance grant, up until the first year where you, you as a school district didn't receive anything, that was the first time that ever happened. So, it was an unprecedented amount
Right. Exactly.
that was granted at that time.
Right.
And then going forward, it, kind of looking at it going, okay, here we are again. How do we treat it now, knowing that we have not gotten it in the past?
Right. Well, we're getting those monies now.
Now, you're getting them.
Yes. Right. Okay. So, okay. So, fair enough. Then, in the $1.7 million of the capital project that we, that the Board of Ed spent and didn't get reimbursed for, totally understand what happened there. This was the tennis courts, I believe, at Enfield Streets, at Enfield High School, that we did over, that the, that the remuneration didn't come through. So, again, how does this list of recommendations address that potential miscommunication?
I think those dollars are reimbursement dollars. Again, you have to be the alliance district to be eligible, but that is, it's, the key word is eligible and can apply, right? It's not a slam dunk that you're getting those dollars. And so, I would say, again, we're not building any budget based on optimism that things are going to go our way.
Fair enough.
It needs to be documented and confirmed, and in those instances, it was not.
Right. Okay.
Some similar grants like that you can apply for before you do
Right.
the projects and get pre-approved for the grant.
Yeah.
So that once you start the project, you know you have the dollars secured for the cost of the grant before you break ground on the project.
Right. But to be fair, our educational cost-sharing grant, we are told what we're going to get, and we start budgeting based on that before it even shows up at the door, right? So, there are grants that we
Yes.
start spending before they show up. So, it's not unorthodox that we do spend against grant money that we know is coming, right?
No, no, no.
So, and as do other towns.
Yep.
Right. Okay. And then, I won't, I'm taking up too much time, but the $600,000 shortfall in excess costs, the reimbursement rate that came from the state, again, changed the reimbursement rate because towns all over the state were having excess more special ed costs, and so they reduced the amount that came from, that went to every city in town. How does that fit into this list of strategic recommendations?
When we talk about building the budget based on actual...
Excuse me. Lindsay, can you just use that mic right there in front of you?
Sure, sure.
No, the one right in front of your water bottle. Yep. Just turn it on. That way, they can hear you better. Thank you.
Better? Can you hear me? Okay. Building the budget based on the, the actuals, right? In reality, we haven't seen a district get 91% for quite some time, right? So, if you've, if you're really getting closer to 67, 70, then we need to be building the budget based on 67, 70, not the promise of maybe getting 90, right?
But in this particular case,
Yeah.
I believe that the board was told definitive in pretty clear terms that they were going to be getting this higher reimbursement rate, right up until the end, where that changed. So, are we, should we just not believe people when they tell us?
We haven't seen a district get 91% in our...
Okay. I'm, I'm just...
I think you're, if, unless it's on paper,
Mm-hmm.
I think you need to take a conservative approach to
Okay.
what dollars you're going to get. And I certainly respect that the state
Yeah.
wants to provide as much as they can, but to be honest... wants to provide as much as they can, but to be honest, over, over a number of years, we've seen them reduce the amount, right? And it's not consistent, so you can't really plan for it, but I, I think to be safe, you need to be conservative in what that estimate is, as best as possible.
Yeah, okay, and just my last question for you. It's not possible that a member of the Board of Education could possibly, they, they don't have access to funds, right? There's no access that board members have to money in our system. Is that true?
Yes, that is a true statement.
Right.
There's, they do not have access, they do not spend the school district's money.
Right, and so none of this, this $6.9 million that I just walked through with you, none of this was stolen, none of it was diverted, none of that, that did not happen.
That is a correct statement.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the questions that I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Counselor Ungar?
Thank you, Mayor Sikala. Thank you for your presentation. Piggybacking on Counselor Santinella, one of his questions regarding the 27 additional special ed students that all came in in one year, which is unforeseen, I'm wondering, do non-English speaking students fall in that category? Maybe that's a question for the superintendent, or?
I would ask the superintendent, my assumption is yes, if they're part of the school district, then the answer is yes.
They don't speak English, they'll fall under special ed.
They're a part, no, 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 no. If, if they, go ahead, well, hold on.
Sure.
Uh, no. The, for the non-English speaking students that enter the district, they go through a series of tests where they're identified if they're EL or they're not EL, English learners or non-English learners. That does not necessarily mean that they're special education students.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Different levels, different levels of terminology. High needs are defined to be three different things, free and reduced lunch, English language learners, or special education. So one of those three. I believe what was referenced this evening was all special education.
Okay, thank you.
All set? Okay, Counselor Hall?
Okay, Madam Mayor, so I've got a couple of questions. The first one is, I noticed that in the back you indicate who you spoke with, and was there a reason you did not speak with the superintendent at the time that was our superintendent, when most of this audit was being looked at?
Go ahead, Lindsay.
Well, it wasn't conducted as a forensic audit, right? So we weren't, we didn't emphasize, like, we looked at the years prior to look at the dollars, but as far as like the process walkthrough in terms of how are we doing the budget, how are we handling transfers and so forth, we were focused on what are we doing today? Do we have good controls and, and financial hygiene in place, and what do things look like today? The assessment and the, the financials was a look back, but we didn't really forensically dig in and, you know, granted, the superintendent was also not here.
I, I was just going to say, the, when we did the interviews and such, he had, he was no longer here. Actually, the new superintendent was on.
Right, we did interview him.
And I, and I want to give kudos to our new superintendent, because I think he's implemented already a lot of your recommendations, so I think we're probably not going to bump up against a lot of this again. The other question, more of a statement really, with the alliance district, so there were four towns in the entire state of Connecticut that fell into alliance at the same time, when they expanded the alliance district, and those bottom four, which we were one of, were treated totally differently than the other alliance districts. And what happened with our ECS funding is the entire grant came to the town of Enfield. So instead of the alliance money coming out of the ECS funding, which you actually note in your report here, like, most districts' alliance money is cut out of their ECS funds, that didn't happen with Enfield. Enfield got all their funds, so they got their complete budgeted ECS money instead of that 1.4 coming out of their ECS dollars. So the confusion came in when the town under-budgeted the ECS number in their side of the budget. So the number that the town budgeted was $1.4 million less in the, in the line item in the town's budget. They were told several times that that was incorrect, that they should have fully funded that amount in ECS. So my question is, going forward, that is no longer going to be an issue, because now those funds are being pulled out of the grant. So they're getting alliance money, but their ECS number is going to be less. So hopefully, there won't be any confusion going forward, they're going to get the exact same amount, it's just going to go directly to the district, that funding.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and the, I've, I've got a question on your chart on page 14. So under salary instructional, instructional coaches, there was, am I reading this right? There was nothing budgeted in that line item, and there was half a million in expenditures. So in that particular chart, I'm seeing that the board didn't budget anything for instructional coaches? Am I reading that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and then, and ended up spending half a million, and then under salary eagle behavior tech, again, there was nothing in the budget for this group?
Correct.
Of techs, nothing. Okay, and the actual expenditure was one and a half million dollars. So between those two line items, that there was nothing budgeted for, there was $2 million that was actually spent. Okay, all right.
I think that Superintendent Macio wanted to, did you want to comment on this?
If I could.
Absolutely, come on up. You can pull up a chair.
No, my meeting's tomorrow night. So again, prior to my time, but my understanding is the philosophy of the time of the superintendent at that point. Remember, this is back when ESER funding was still being drawn down. The philosophy at that point was they did not do appropriations, or they did not show appropriations when money was going to be spent down through ESER funding. So those particular positions, I'm sorry, I got to look over your shoulder, the eagle behavior techs, as well as the instructional coaches, those were all being planned to be spent down from ESER funds. So in a way, it's accurate, because there was no appropriation from the Town Council to the Board of Education for those positions, they were all being funded elsewhere.
Okay.
Okay. Can I go sit back now, no?
Thank you, yes, for now. No, no, I, I actually, I don't have a lot more. The only other question, and I have to confess, I didn't see it in here, but I might have missed it, did you break down any of the ARPA funds and how they were spent in regards to the budget, or did you not take those into account for? I didn't see anything, but I could have missed it.
We didn't look at the ARPA funds specifically to see how they were appropriated or spent.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, I think, hold on, I think that's all of them. I think that's all my questions, but let me just double-check my notes.
You didn't look at it?
Yes, I think that's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselors Anonee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So a few questions, and I think you just touched upon regarding the ARPA funds, but I don't know if you can opine on this briefly. So under 4A, when we did have the staff, and I think Counselor Hall also touched upon it, staff that was hired under ARPA and/or ESER funds, and that was not appropriated or listed in the appropriations, because they believed that those funds were under the grants, correct, my understanding? Those funds were not listed into the original appropriation.
Go ahead.
In your opinion, do you believe that was appropriate, given it was the anticipation of the district at the time, even those were non-recurring funds, they were intending those to be reoccurring positions? So should it have been listed, given they were coming before the council at the time, adding those positions in for appropriations, and they were characterizing it at the time as those positions being eliminated, even though those grants were expiring?
My opinion is, for the most accurate budget, I would, they would be included in the budget, right? Where the revenues are coming to pay for that is another conversation, but for the budget to be truly accurate, right, I would, I would put that in there.
Thank you, because I, I found it personally a little frustrating that it wasn't budgeted for, and then when it came before the council, it's my understanding that there was, there was some misconceptions there because of that grant money, even though it was reoccurring expenses that they wanted, that they used one-time funds for.
It's alarming to see a zero, right?
Yeah.
As the, as the starting amount, and so, yeah, agreed.
Okay, thank you. And this question is, is the superintendent still here? For the zero-based budgeting, I-
Told you to pull up a chair. I did, I warned you.
Hi, Zach.
What's going on? So for the zero-based budgeting, I know you discussed in some instances where recommendations were already in the process of implementation, so my question is, is that something that the district is considering implementing, and if so, what is the timeline for you to do that?
No, what I would tell you is that the vast majority of what was being recommended by the firm here was already implemented by me.
Okay.
So at the time they came in to do their audit and do all of the interviews, I want to say it was last spring, we had already gone through a budget process, I had already completely revised the process that we went through. It is extremely itemized at this point, you have plenty of paper that you'll be able to see everything for. To answer the question about like the zero, the non-budgeting and things like that, everything in my budget as built is presented as the costs, and then never-before included is I include revenue lines. So everything is offset. So if we're going to spend a million dollars on something, but I'm anticipating it coming from a revenue stream of a million dollars, then you're going to see the black line showing a million, and you're going to show a red line that's revenue of a million dollars, so it's a net of zero. So it's completely transparent, for lack of a better way of saying it.
Okay, thank you.
So, and, and I am going to point out, because you heard about position control tonight, if you want to speak to anybody in the Human Resources Department over in the Board of Education, they will tell you that they are tired of hearing me talk about position control, because the way we budget now is literally by every single individual person that is, that works for the, for the district. To that extent, and these folks don't even know this, we have a two-day training on better implementation of position control tomorrow and Wednesday. My HR person, my executive assistant, as well as some other folks from the business office, will be participating in that.
Thank you, that does answer my question. And so my last question is, you noted, under the miscommunication misunderstanding for point three here, regarding the $2.5 million, it notes that this deposit has still not been completely understood by EPS and demonstrates a communication and transparency gap. So isn't my understanding that the individuals that were involved with this $2.5 million were exclusively the town, it's nothing respective to the state of Connecticut regarding the transfer of funds into that account?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess what I'm wondering is, maybe in your conversations, could you explain why nearly three years later, there's still, given all the individuals regarding this discrepancy work for the town or the school district, that it still hasn't been resolved, regarding confusion that you noted here?
I think on the school district side, right, when we had interviewed some of the key people within the department, they were like, I still don't understand the full picture, I don't understand the story. There was a feeling of unease and question, and in our opinion, this should have been put to bed a while ago, and was a simple conversation between the town and the school district. So certainly to, to remove any angst or, or worry on the school district side, I think this could have been remediated a while ago.
Okay, all right, thank you. No further questions, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, now that I'm here, I just want to add, one of the items that we put into place when I came into the district, and I know Mr. Kopler thoroughly enjoys the fact that we meet basically every two weeks. So the leadership team, so myself, Deputy Superintendent Annie Longy, will meet with Mr. Kopler, as well as Mr. Belinda, and then what we'll do is we'll follow that up the following week, where we'll have the Board of Education leadership, as well as myself and Mr. Longy, will typically meet with the leadership of the Town Council, so that we can make sure that there is greater communication, trying to already solve the problems that are here.
Thank you. All right, we only have a couple minutes left, so Counselor Matthews, and then I'll go Counselor Prisner.
Thank you, Mayor Sikala. Looking at the ERP system optimization, I was actually a little bit surprised that maybe we're behind on that. We're talking about Munis, right?
Yes.
Yep, so, and as a former Munis user, and, you know, my admin heart broke just a little bit, thinking that maybe those permissions weren't assigned the way that they were supposed to, I guess. It seems like one of the easiest issues here to fix, or one of the easiest strategies to implement, so I was just wondering where you were at with that.
I will give the microphone back to the superintendent, but I would say, relative to other districts, this district has been extremely proactive in terms of getting Tyler to come on-site. I know they were already out here a month ago or so, and spent several days, and I've already told other clients, like, hey, give them a call, Enfield has them on-site, because-
They're excellent.
There have been training issues with Tyler and other communities in the past, so the fact that they were on-site and sat down with your team is huge, in addition to position control, which is a big lift to implement. There were some low-hanging fruit in terms of like, you know, blocking or preventing someone from over-expending a line item and things like that, those are easy fixes, but-
And I think those are more setup and configuration, because every purchase is still approved through the proper chain, it's just whether it goes to a line item that's already had the funds appropriated to it or not, but all the purchases are still approved. The other piece of it is, I would say, is that as far as where you're at with Munis compared to other communities, I wouldn't say you're behind. I would say most communities have similar challenges, or haven't implemented every full module that they have with Munis, because of just how large it is.
Right, it's really just sitting down and making sure everything's assigned the way it should be, and the stopgaps are in place.
Right. And just to add, position control is a big lift. It's not just a couple of checkboxes, it's a much more significant lift. More importantly, they're getting the training now, so I think that'll help, one, develop a comprehensive strategy in how to get it implemented correctly and do it one time. We have seen many other communities who have attempted to do it, and they struggled for years, so I, I think it sounds like the superintendent is well on his way to getting something.
And prioritizing.
Yeah.
Excellent, that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor-
Thank you for the explanation. So there's a couple of things. This audit really shows us moving forward, and, and I'm really glad that that came out, but I'm not going to lie, I was looking for a little, a little dig deeper into why the problem happened. But again, that's history, and so, under our new superintendent, thank you, I see the ship being righted, and I see us going in the right direction. However, the 2.5, I was on the council when that all happened, I actually was a brand-new counselor when that happened, and it was my understanding that it was kind of like dropped in and pulled right out. So do you know how long that 2.5 million was in the school board account before it got taken out?
I don't know exact dates, but our understanding of it was within a payroll cycle.
Okay, so, so we were always under the understanding it was much quicker than that, but, okay, that-
It was there long enough that the district was calling the state and trying to figure out what it was and address it.
All right, that's fine. So you said a conservative approach, I appreciate that, and I'm hoping we will continue to take the conservative approach. And lastly, I have had the privilege of sitting on this council for four years, and at the first meeting of every council that I've been up here, I have asked if we could get a quarterly report, not only of the Board of Education, but of the town. I've asked for it, and I've been said, oh yeah, we're going to get it, four years. We haven't gotten it. So I'm going to ask again, can we please, as a council, get some type of a quarterly report that, from the Board of Ed and from the town, so that we know where we're at, so the surprises don't happen? I think it's a pretty easy ask, so I'm just putting it out there again, Madam Mayor, between you and our town manager and our superintendent. And I honestly think that that's, you know, I'm, I'm just really happy that, again, this audit didn't really dig deep enough, in my, in my opinion- didn't really dig deep enough, in my, in my opinion, but at least it's put us on the right track. And as long as we have our good superintendent, I think we will stay on that track. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Crissati.
Yeah, first of all, I have to commend all three of you for your very thorough, thorough report. The big take out of here is the increased communication and collaboration between the town and the Board of Ed. That is the bottom line. That's what we're looking at here. And you brought some recommendations in front of us. Great questions were asked. And Superintendent Macchio, I think you've done a fantastic job since you've been here in attacking this issue that we did have. So I commend you for that. You know, the, the 2.5 million dollars that, you know, seemed to be, you know, was there and then it was taken back from the town. I know it was there for a while. And that's where the confusion did come from. But moving forward, we'll take these recommendations, and I think it'll make the Board of Ed and the town realize that we do have to work together in all financial matters. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Could I just add, sorry?
Sure.
One of the nice things I'm hearing is this discussion between the town manager and the superintendent. To me, this is a team sport, right? We can't go at it alone. We can't have the school district do their own thing, and town manager or the town do their own thing. We have a collection of monies that, you know, we need to share within the community. And it's great to hear and see that we're moving in that direction of a team sport. And I want to say thank you, because to me, that gives me that warm feeling that, yeah, we had some problems in the past, but now we're creating a game plan, team sport, so that we don't run into those same problems in the future. So, great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mangini.
Thank you. I do want to say thank you for your hard work, for a very fine, put-together report. I also am pleased with your recommendations. I think it's important to note that on page five of our draft that we received, that you point out the relationship between the ECS, the excess cost spending, with the special education component. And I think it's also important, and you pointed it out very nicely, that we cannot project or predict how many students will be coming in to our district. We don't have that number. That is a very nebulous number. And I quite honestly feel that our Board of Education is doing a fine job, our superintendent and staff. And I appreciate the fact that we are working together as a team. So again, thank you for your hard work. It's really very important.
Thank you.
Thank you. I can just say, for me, when, just as a aside, when this goes on the website, we need to remove "draft" because it's no longer a draft. So it's a final copy, so people don't think there's another copy coming. So if we can just get the watermark off, that'd be great. You know, it kind of sounds like a lot of these recommendations are being implemented, which is wonderful. It seemed to me like it was sort of a perfect storm of unexpected and costs that nobody can anticipate. So it's great, and, you know, no surprise to many of us that there is no fraud, mismanagement, waste, or wrongdoing. And that is, we'll put this to bed. So thank you very much for your presentation, Superintendent. Thank you. And, oh-
Can I just say one thing real quick on the quarterly reports? The school by the MOU does provide a quarterly report. And I have that and make sure we'll get it out to everyone.
And they do have a finance committee. We have a finance subcommittee, so we, we'll, we'll be fine. Thank you. Okay. Can I get a motion to, again, thank you, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. And we will, oh, all in favor of coming out of special meeting? Thank you. We're going to take a three-to-five-minute break before the regular meeting starts. For those of you who are speaking, please sign up. Meeting, regular meeting of the Town Council, the order on November 17th, 7:00 PM, starting by a prayer from Linda Allegro, if we can all stand.
Lord, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic for its stance, one nation, under God, universal, with unity, justice, for all.
Thank you. Linda, roll call, please.
Counselor Allegro.
Here.
Mayor Sikala.
Here.
Counselor Crissati.
Here.
Counselor Hall.
Here.
Counselor Mangini.
Here.
Counselor Matthews.
Here.
Counselor Pisner.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Santinella.
Here.
Counselor Thomas.
Here.
Counselor Ungary.
Here.
And Counselor Zanoni.
Here.
Eleven members are present, none are absent.
Thank you. Item four on the agenda is the fire evacuation announcement. In the event of a fire and emergency, there are two exits in the council, so you can either exit out the rear, go a safe distance from the building, or go out these doors to the side, down one flight of stairs, out the door, and again, a safe distance from the building. Item five on the agenda is meetings of preceding minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the special meeting of October 20, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, changes? Okay. All in favor of the special minutes of October 20, 2025? Any against? Any abstentions? One, two, three, four, five. So I believe it is six abstentions, five in favor, none against. So I believe that stays on the table. I don't know if it's ever going to come off the table.
That's going to stay on the table, but any members who watch those meetings can come back and confirm the minutes at another time.
Okay. Thank you. And regular meeting October 20th, 2025, motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, changes? All in favor? Any abstentions? And any against? All right. Six in favor. Okay. Six in favor of that one. Thank you. Item six, special guests, the Patriot Award presentation. So I would ask that the Patriot Award Committee come on up. And I believe Counselor Mangini and Counselor Ungary are the members from the council. You guys can all go up. And I think you just need to turn this on. Yeah, go right up.
Do I go up now? Might anybody else?
Yeah. Okay.
Good. Good evening, everyone. Today, we celebrate a remarkable individual whose commitment to our community and country embodies the very spirit of patriotism. Patriotism takes many forms. It's seen as the selfless acts of our veterans who served to protect our nation, and the dedication of our first responders, and the quiet generosity of volunteers whose everyday actions strengthen the bonds within our community. Here in Enfield, this spirit was recognized years ago by Jason McCladden, owner of the Pearl Street Barber Shop. He was inspired by the American flags that line Enfield Street on his trips to and from his shop. Those flags are a reminder that we are surrounded by patriots in our everyday lives. Jason suggested that a local man or woman be honored for their dedication and service. Following his suggestion, the Enfield Town Council established the Enfield Patriot Award to recognize residents who exemplify these values. In July, the Enfield Fourth of July Town Celebration, we had the pleasure of introducing our 2025 Patriot Award winner. Today, we are here to present her with a plaque in recognition of her service and dedication. I will now turn it over to Pam Townsend, who will share a little bit more about Marlene's remarkable patriotism.
So, well, Marlene, what can I say? Fifty years supporting the Girl Scouts, forty years mentoring Girl Scouts, forty-plus. Yeah. Let's see. She places over 3,000, coordinates placing over 3,000 flags twice a year at the cemeteries on our veterans' graves. Any veteran that received cookies yesterday, Marlene was part of that team. Honchoing that. Her Girl Scouts are out here in the, in the crowd. Marlene works with seniors and juniors on Triad, the seniors, the Friends of the Senior Center. Triad is a safety program, national safety program for seniors. She's, let's see, what other, Commission on Aging? How many more other things can we, that's it? I can tell you, I've seen her working the elections. I've seen her working in COVID, although it's not mentioned in her award, but I did see-
Race Across America.
Race Across America. She helps with Race Across America. She's a member of the John Macholik Auxiliary, and we're the host for Race Across America. And Marlene is a key player in that program, in coordinating the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts, and how they place the ceremonial wreaths. So those are just a few of the things I touched on. So, but she's, she really is a super person for the, and very well-deserving of this award.
Okay. I didn't want to leave out Triad. Also, the American Legion Post 154, the Women's Auxiliary. Marlene's unwavering commitment to advocate for our seniors, to honor veterans and the Girl Scouts, makes her deserving of this award. We commend her for her patriotism, and we thank her for her personal commitment to the citizens of our Enfield community. So on behalf of the Enfield Town Council and the Patriots Award Committee, we hereby congratulate Marlene Hojinski on being the 2025 recipient of the Enfields Annual Patriot Award.
Can I have my two Girl Scouts come up here? I have two Girl Scouts in the audience. There's a lot of stuff that I do, wouldn't be done without the girls. We've been flagging cemeteries in this town for over ten years. Over ten years. We've been doing cookies for vets for over ten years. That's a lot of cookies and a lot of flags. So this plaque belongs to them, too. Because without them, a lot of this stuff wouldn't be done. And I want to thank everybody who had a part in this. Thank my family. Hey, Donald, you're out there watching. Okay. Maybe my granddaughter Olivia, if she got the YouTube thing, Hi-Liv. You know, and it's just, it's an honor, and it's a privilege, and I'm humbled. Really, truly, I am. You may not think so, but I am. Okay. So, I think that's it. Do I need anything else?
No.
No.
We're good?
We're good.
Okay. You got picatures?
We have picatures.
[applause] Yep.
We're good.
Thank you.
Marlene, hold up.
Marlene, hold up.
Oh.
Did you know we're down?
Yeah. Thank you.
Marlene, hold up.
Marlene, hold up.
Oh.
Did you know we're down?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Pam.
Good job, Marlene. We eat more of your cookies.
They were good.
Were they good?
They were good.
Yeah, they're all right?
Just about. There's a couple.
I had two yesterday.
Next item on the agenda is number seven, public communications and petitions. Any Enfield resident or taxpayer who wishes to address the council shall first be recognized by the chair and shall state their name and address for the record. We do now have a sign-in sheet. They'll be limited to five minutes for the first round. After each person who desires- Any Enfield resident or taxpayer who wishes to address the council shall first be recognized by the chair and shall state their name and address for the record. We do now have a sign-in sheet. They'll be limited to five minutes for the first round. After each person who desires to speak has gone once, those desiring to speak a second time will be permitted to do so. Shall the, their limit will be three minutes, the second round. During public communications, item seven on the agenda, they will be given two rounds. If we get to item four prior to 11:00 PM, they will be able to do another two rounds for eight minutes total. I'm sorry, three minutes. It shall be limited to one hour unless extended by a majority vote of the council, and all remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, not any individual member, please. And all remarks to the administration shall be addressed to the town manager, not individual employees. And public members shall observe proper decorum and good conduct, and shall refrain from personalities. First on the list is Pam Townsend. Come on up.
Thank you. Before I begin, I'd like to congratulate every one of you for your reelection or your election, and I look forward to working with you. I'm here to announce a couple of the veteran programs that we have coming up, events. Reeds Across America is having a fundraiser this Saturday at Mount Carmel, and it is, it begins at 4:30. The doors open at 4:30. Dinner is served at 5:00. One hundred percent of those ticket sales go to Reeds Across America here in Enfield, so please come on out, enjoy the delicious homemade pasta, not pasta, but homemade sauce. The food is awesome. If you've ever been there, I go, I like to go once a month, try and go. Tickets are $12 for adults, six to, children ages six to 12 are $6, five and under are free, and you pay at the door. The next event is our Reeds Across America Ceremony on December 13th, and it's at St. Patrick Cemetery. It begins at 12:00 PM, and there is information on our Facebook page, Enfield, Connecticut, Reeds Across America, or you may contact me at 860-463-2795 for information on wreath sponsorship or ceremony details. Each veteran wreath costs $17, so please sponsor your, if you're planning on sponsoring a wreath, please sponsor it through a group code. By doing so, it guarantees that that, that you're, it actually guarantees two things, that the wreath will go to St. Patrick Cemetery, and that a group will receive $5 back for their fundraising. And we all know how important fundraising is to all our organizations. And the last event is on January 16th, 2026. It is sponsored by the Enfield Veterans Council. It is a recognition ceremony for all of the Enfield veterans in celebration of the 250th year of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. Invitations, let me pull that out for you. Invitations have been mailed out Friday and have been emailed to all the veterans. You should receive it by no later than November 24th. If you have not received it, please contact Jim Maloney at 860-749-1555, or email at 250-vet-c o u n at gmail dot com, and we'll get an invitation out to you right away. And in closing, I'd like to thank the Enfield Public Schools for hosting a Veterans Day Ceremony at the elementary schools. It was extremely heartwarming to see the children's excitement when singing patriotic songs and presenting their veteran with a certificate, so I thank you. I was fortunate to be able to attend because we were presenting the colors, well, Lucian was presenting the colors, I got to take pictures. So anyway, thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Pam.
Good evening. I don't know if I'm running out of the number of times that I'm allowed to come here.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Wendy Osada, 8 Windmill Road. I don't know if I'm running out of the number of times I'm allowed to come and speak here on this topic, but once again, I am currently a member of the Enfield Greater Together Community Fund Advisory Committee. And what we do is we lead a process to identify the needs of our community and oversee grant making, aim to ensure that the Greater Together Community Funds can have the greatest impact for the benefit of Enfield residents. The maximum grant award is $5,000. The committee just completed another grant-making cycle and awarded over $58,000 to Enfield nonprofit organizations. We expect our next grant cycle to kick off the first quarter of 2026. In order to be eligible for a grant, they must be utilized to benefit the community of Enfield. Organizations must be exempt under 501(c)(3), or if they are not classified as a 501(c)(3), they may use a fiscal sponsor that is. Our advisory committee is desperately seeking additional committee members. The committee solicits applications for grants and then plays a lead role in deciding how the grants will be allocated. The meetings are held the second Thursday evening of each month, and we need more committee members in order to be able to continue providing these grants for our community. Without enough committee members, we cannot provide the available funds to the Enfield community. Enfield residents who do not hold a town-elected position or are an immediate family member of anyone who is, are eligible to apply, including students or young adults as young as 14-plus. You know, maybe a community service opportunity for some kids that need some community service time. So to either apply for a grant when the next cycle does open, or at any time to apply for a position on the advisory committee, please search online for the Enfield Greater Together Community Fund, the one in the United States, not the one in the United Kingdom, because there is an Enfield Community Fund in the United Kingdom. I also have flyers printed out for me that I can give you along with my contact number for anyone that's here tonight, or if you have questions, please see me. Thank you for your time. Please consider applying for a grant or serving on the community if eligible. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Lucian, you're up.
Lucian Laffey, 54 Campbell Drive, also chairman of the Enfield Veterans Council. I'm here, first of all, to thank everyone who came out for our Veterans Day Parade. I appreciate the people that took the time to come out and watch our parade. I'd also like to thank the town for all the support that they give, the Police Department, the Public Works, and the Town Council. All support the veterans very well in this town. However, I have to say that I was disappointed with the attendance, as a lot of you that are up on the dais and marching to the parade can attest to. Everyone says they support veterans. Please show it by coming out for our parades and ceremonies. A lot of work and planning goes into a parade, and we have a good mix. We have marching bands performing, veterans organizations, military with vehicles, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, horses, classic cars, motorcycles, fire trucks, and other equipment. We tried to get a good mix for a good parade. And I saw a lot of comments that said, "I didn't know there was a parade." Veterans Day Parade is always around November 11th. It was on multiple Facebook pages, it was shared to others, it was on the sign across from the town green for two weeks. It was in Patch. We put signs all over town announcing it a week prior, too. And the Enfield Police announced that Route 5 was going to be closed for our parade. So I find it hard to believe that people didn't know we were going to have a parade. And you can also look on the town website under the Veterans tab. Shortly after the parade, I noticed people were already asking, "When is the torchlight parade?" So if you're interested enough in our Veterans Day Parade, you would have asked and found out. The most disappointing thing is the attendance at the ceremony. It lasts maybe a half hour. It's a chance for the public to hear the Enfield High School band perform, and the Enfield High School Honors Choir to perform our national anthem. They work hard and many hours to prepare for this, and the town should support them. See where the money is being spent in these schools to give the kids the opportunity to perfect their music and their singing. And probably the thing that bothers me the most is the people that congregate to watch the parade in the area of the town green, as soon as the parade was over, walked away. There's a ceremony right behind them, but they chose to walk away. So you always know, I always say, the parade is the frosting on the cake, the ceremony is the meat and potatoes of what we're there for. That's what it's all about. So mark your calendars, our Memorial Day Parade is on May 24th, 2026. Check Facebook and look for our signs, and we'll see you there. I also want to say thank you to the Girl Scouts that came around and handed out cookies for the veterans. I was, Pam and I were one of the recipients, and like she said, the cookies were good. And I also had the privilege of attending three of the veterans' programs in the elementary schools. It's my honor to go out and attend those programs. It means a lot to me, it means a lot to the veterans of those students that come that day. So please, get out and support the vets. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucian. George Young.
George Young, 8 Holly Lane. Good evening to the newly-elected council members. I'm sure the next two years will be the ride of your life. There'll be a lot of numbers this evening, but there are page references for you to go back to. My first question tonight through the mayor to the town manager is whether or not the town audited financial statements for the fiscal year June 30th, 2025, will be completed by December 31st, 2025, or will they be on extension? The town charter states, "Financial reports shall be prepared for each quarter and for other periods as may be required by the town manager," which I am quoting. And then I said, "Well, I believe that quarterly reports are being given to the council, but I'm not sure they are," after listening to what Tamari had to say tonight. "Why not put the same reports on the website for all of us to see? That would be transparency, which other municipalities would envy. One further step would be for the next Charter Revision Committee to set a time limit in the charter for these quarterly reports to be completed and distributed. Until then, let's continue to discuss the June 30th, 2024 audited report. Last month, I asked about certain internal controls reported by the auditors and the lack of formal investment policies. Have these been addressed? During the past two year-ends, there was $24 to $26 million not in the town's name, but were in the pledging bank's trust department. See report on pages 44 to 45. On page 130, when I reviewed the report on revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances, government funds, for the past 10 years, there were several items of interest. Let's address the debt service of the town as a percentage of non-capital expenditures. The 2024 total expenditures were $211.1 million, minus the capital outlay of $16.3 million, for a net expenditure of $194.8 million. The principal and interest payments totaled $15.5 million. So by dividing the P&amp;I payments by the net expenditures of $194.8 million, we get 7.9%. That's a lot of money. It appears to be troubling that the debt service in 2024 was 1.3 higher than in 2024, was 1.3 higher than in 23. However, though it is increasing, this is the first time in over 10 years that that calculation was correct. It actually went up a half of 1% when the prior year is restated. If the 2025 report has not been completed yet, perhaps someone would care to review my comments and restate the percentages at the bottom of the report for all the prior years, if they agree. As a reminder, the calculation is debt service as a percentage of non-capital expenditures. In 2024, we increased our fund balance in the government fund by $28 million, but over $23 million of that was from issuance of bonds. The other $5 million increase was from more revenue than expenses. The servicing of our debt is getting higher and higher and needs to be addressed by the town manager and the town council. I'm pretty sure that our deputy mayor, Mr. Santinella, would probably agree with that. The taxpayers should notice that less and less of the total expenditures are for capital outlay in the last 10 years. Yet our total expenses increase, especially in the education area. In 2023, there was only $93 million spent on education, whereas in '22 and '24, there was $102 million spent. Maybe the council might want to check that out when the audit draft of the BOE is finalized, which I wrote these before you saw the report tonight. It seems like there was a $6 million decrease in education expenses in 2023, and maybe that contributed to the 2024 issues. That's it, I'll pass for now. Thank you.
We'll call you back up. Do I have to push the thread? I think so. Amy Nickerson, this is my son Tyler and my son Ben. 5 Grandview Drive. Good evening. I would like to first start by congratulating everyone in their newly-elected position. Your dedication and commitment to our community is evident. I wish, I look forward to seeing the positive impact you'll all have on our town, and I wish you the best of luck. Going to do my best. On Friday, September 12th of this year, my loving husband of 20 years, and Tyler and Ben's amazing father, Jamie Nickerson, a Buildings and Grounds employee for the town of Enfield, was tragically killed. My boys and I would first like to thank all first responders and Jamie's coworkers at the scene that day. We know you did everything possible you could to save him. Jamie was a dedicated and respected Buildings and Grounds employee for 17 years. The processional to this ceremony was a true testament to who Jamie was and honored him in such a remarkable way. To the 82 towns lining Route 5 with their DPW trucks and their employees saluting him as we drove by, we would like to genuinely thank you. To Jamie's B&amp;G coworkers, many of which were close friends, the DPW, the Enfield Police Department, the Enfield Fire Department, EMS, and countless employees and members of the Town Council, thank you. Leet Stevens and so many members of our community, thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your support and efforts in giving my husband the incredible send-off that he very much deserved. While this was and will always be the most heartbreaking moment in our lives, it also warmed our hearts to see how truly loved and respected he was. The Enfield community came together in an amazing way to honor Jamie with a candlelight vigil, which made, which was made possible with support and coordination not only from our family and friends, but from the town of Enfield, the Enfield Police Department, Stephen McGoldrick from Leet Stevens Funeral, and Mark Veyu for lending his sound system. We are thankful for this overwhelming show of support. We would also like to thank the Teachers Association for remembering that the Buildings and Grounds Department was also deeply affected by Jamie's death. They raised money and held a cater lunch for the B&amp;G crew to show their support. Jamie was so close to his coworkers, and this gesture meant a lot. There were so many other town departments, programs, and community members that have reached out to provide their support, and we are truly great. reached out to provide their support, and we are truly grateful to all of you. Jamie loved his work, he took pride in it. He was proud to serve this town, proud to show up every day and give 100%. When he was tragically killed while doing his job, our world changed in an instant, and so did every plan we had for our future. What does not change is the need for stability and security and the ability to keep moving forward as a family. That is why the proposal before the town to extend health insurance benefits for families of employees who are fatally injured on the job from 60 days to 60 months means a lot. For families like mine, those extra months of coverage are not simply a financial benefit, they are breathing room. They are one less fear in a time full of fear. They are the ability to focus on healing instead of worrying about how to care for your children or how to afford critical medical needs while trying to rebuild a life that has been shattered. What you are considering tonight tells families like mine that their loved one's service mattered. It tells employees who show up every day, often quietly, often without recognition, that if the unthinkable happens, their families will not face it alone. On behalf of myself, my family, and the many families who never have a chance to stand here but will be impacted by this decision, I want to say thank you. Thank you for taking steps that will help protect the families of those who give so much to this town. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amy. Mr. Cremona, you're next.
No.
Okay.
All right, thank you. That is all we had on the sign-up list. I don't know if anybody else. Yes, is there any other names on the list? Anybody else need to speak for the first time? All right, Mr. Young, come on up.
George Young, 8 Holly Lane. It was interesting to note that on page 140 of the town, that the town's largest employer in fiscal year '24 was the Town of Enfield Board of Education, with 1,406 employees, when there were 1,200 employees 10 years ago, despite a population decrease of 4,000 people during that same period, as stated on page 139. That correlation would cause the remaining population of Enfield to pay more taxes each year. If we were to look at page 96 of the report, then we would notice that the town's covered pension payroll has increased in the past 10 years by $5.2 million, or 24.6%, excuse me, 24.8%. These costs will continue to impact future liabilities the town must pay. The town's pension liability has now increased from $4.2 million in 2015 to $7.6 million in 2024, which is 81% higher. The net pension liability as a percentage of total payroll has correspondingly increased from 19.84% to 29.15% in the past 10 years. I could go on and on, but suffice it to say that the number of town employees needs to be reduced to bring these costs into line with what taxpayers are willing and able to afford going forward. It is my opinion that the town council and the town manager and the BOE must address this issue before the next budget. Through the mayor to the town manager, I believe it is important to update certain financial information on the town's website. A delinquent list of taxpayers from 2022 is no longer meaningful information unless a new report shows the same names that are delinquent. One other thing is that there has been no par report in recent months by the town manager, and it is always a great source of information for the townspeople to see what has been accomplished by the town recently. The taxpayers need this type of report so they can see what has been done by various departments. That's it, and I want to thank the Girl Scouts also for the nice cookies. That's it. Bye.
Thank you, George. Seeing no other comments for the second round, I will close public communications. Moving along to item eight on the agenda is councilor communications. Anyone have any? Go ahead, Cindy.
Thank you, just a couple of comments. First, I want to remind people, especially driving around by schools, noticing, especially around JFK, even though school may be over at 2:30, 2:15, there are after-school activities. People are disregarding the fact that there are kids and, you know, pedestrians, adults, especially kids, that are crossing, that are walking on the sidewalk, that are on their bikes, on their scooters. We must really be very careful because people are just whizzing by, and they are disregarding the speed limit, and that is totally unacceptable. So I'm going to urge every resident that drives to please, please be careful of our kids. It's extremely important. As you know, kids sometimes don't pay attention, they've got the phone going, they've got the headphones on, so we really need to be careful. And the other comment I just want to make, the Warming Center is having a fundraiser, Hope for the Holidays, Safe Harbor, and Bandits Place, Saturday, December 13th, 5:00 to 9:00 at La Notte in East Windsor. Dinner, cash bar, music, dancing, raffles, and you can purchase the tickets online. I believe they may be selling them at the door, but for $40, it's to a good cause, and it's going to help the People for People and the Safe Harbor group. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Councilor Pisner.
So Pam, you stole my thunder. Okay, I had Reese Across America dinner, I had Vets 250, but that's okay. Pam and I work together on a lot of committees, so it shows. But I do want to say thank you for the parade. It was another great parade, and I too was a little disappointed. I thought there'd be more people on the side, but you guys do a great job, and thank you for your hard work. I see two familiar faces in the back of the room. Every year, I give a shout-out to Our Two Moms on a Mission. It is that time, ladies and gentlemen, it is the Angel Tree. I've always been a big supporter of the Angel Tree, and I continue to be one. They had a great quarter auction, I won a prize, it was great. I love quarter auctions, they're the best. So if anybody is interested in taking on a child, a family, a cash donation, whatever, I know both Lauren and Carrie would greatly appreciate it. So please, they're sitting back there in the corner, just tag them right now, or find them on Facebook at Two Moms on a Mission Angel Tree 2025. I know you're going to talk about Jingle Jam, but, you know, Jingle Jam's coming up, Safe Grad, another fun night, great way to raise money for our high school kids going for their Safe Grad night. And that is going to be on the 5th of December, American Legion. And again, a really fun night, and you can get tickets for that. I did get a phone call tonight, mayor to the town manager. On the way here, I got a phone call from a resident who lives in Taft, in the Taft Street area, and I guess he said, somebody decided to spray paint some profanity on the road there, near the sign, not real nice, he's got kids. So I told him I'd bring it up, and maybe we can have somebody go out there and take a look at it. And other than that, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Councilors, enowning.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, to Ms. Nickerson and your family, I hope you know that our hearts are with you, and to come up today to say what you did is incredibly powerful, and I know we're all appreciative of that. Mr. Young, I think we all received this today, so I look forward to going through this, and maybe I'll reach out to you with some questions. Just a few points that I think are important. First, regarding the schools. The demographic changes of the district over the last 10 years have necessitated some pretty significant changes in staffing. It's not the same district, there are other communities in which the populations have not changed so radically, and Enfield is an exception to that. And with that are some changes that impact us financially significantly in regards to staffing. I can tell you personally, just to be upfront, I will not support any reduction in staffing or programs for Enfield Public Schools at any moment over the next two years. I think what has transpired over the last two years is to the extent that we should be cutting the district. I think it did some significant damage. I think what could have been cut has already been cut, and it has already gone too deep, so I'm not going to go any further. I think there are considerations on the town's side that I know myself and other councilors will look at. Through the mayor to the town manager, I think it would be helpful if we could receive an update on the implementation of the Plan of Conservation and Development, specifically the policies that the council has the ability to act upon, and which ones we have chosen to take up and which ones we have not. It's my understanding it's been in force for two to three years now, but there is a significant amount of policies within that document that have not ever come to this council for consideration or discussion. So if we could get an update on that, that would be incredibly appreciative. And through the mayor to the town attorney, as you may be familiar, the legislature met last week to discuss a variety of bills. One of the most notable is housing. I know we have two legislators here. I quite frankly don't care how the bill affects the remainder of the state, I care about how it affects Enfield, and would like to know if sometime before that legislation takes effect in January, if we can just have some understanding of the impacts to that legislation. I know Enfield's in a unique position, we exceed the affordable housing metrics set forth by the state, so I would like to know what parts of those bills will actually impact our community, and if we could bifurcate between the impacts that are outside of our purview, relevant to planning and zoning, as well as the ones, for instance, potentially the housing policy that would have to come before the town council. I know personally, I have some reservations about that bill and what it does to local control, so I'd like to know how that impacts Enfield, I'd be incredibly appreciative of that. Those are my comments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Crissati, and then we'll go to Councilor Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, to the Nickerson family, Amy, it takes a lot of courage to come up in front of us. The community is behind you 100%, and we love you, and we will continue to support you and your family. Second of all, Lions Club Breakfast is Saturday, this Saturday, November 22nd, from 8:00 to 11:30 at the Senior Center. All the monies that are going to be raised will be going towards Safe Harbor, Loaves and Fishes, American School for the Deaf, Aznutik Veterans Association, that money goes to them also, and then their vision program, and Veterans Stand Down, and then they also give out two Enfield High School scholarships for graduation. So it's a great event, come on out, support the Lions Club. And also, that day is the, at the Senior Center, the Holiday Craft Fair. Also coming up on Sunday, November 30th, is 16th Annual Cookies for Camouflage, so I had to throw that one in there, and it is quite disappointing. Lucian, and I totally agree with you, the attendance at the Veterans Parade, I'd like to see more residents out there supporting it, and more importantly, to stay for the ceremony afterwards, because that's what it's all about, is the ceremony, remembering the veterans, or everybody that, you know, is in the armed forces. But thank you for your hard work with that. And the last thing that I'm going to mention on December 4th, our Enfield Social Services and Enfield Child, Youth, and Family Services will be presenting between 6:00 and 7:30, Enfield Winter Tradition Celebrations, whether it's Christmas, Kwanzaa, Hanukkah, some of the other celebrations and traditions, they will be emphasizing that. So come on out and support them. But that's all that I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor to Matt, can you give us an idea of if the previous members that we honor for the councilors that sat up here, if it'll be on the next agenda or when that will take place, just so the folks that are watching, we can get back to on that. And then, Matt, you gave us one more item, you gave us a really comprehensive list of commissions that we needed members for and that are expiring, and I don't know if those were distributed to all the councilors or just leadership. So I would, excuse me, make the request that those get distributed to all members because there might be folks sitting up here that know exactly who's going to fit into those slots nicely and might be able to reach out, and we really need help, I know, on our boards and commissions right now. And should have asked this to the superintendent, but I'm going to ask you, Matt, once again, through the mayor to the town manager, will the Board of Ed have the same opportunity with the school audit that we did here in the presentation to ask questions? Because I know I've gotten texts from board members asking questions, and I'm hoping they're going to have the same presentation, or if not the same presentation, the opportunity to ask those questions. And anybody that didn't, I don't, did we mention the torchlight parade dates? I don't think that got mentioned. If it did, I'm going to be repetitive. So the torchlight parade is Sunday, December 7th, and it is, the parade kicks off at 6:00 at the Enfield Street School, and Carol Singalong will be at 7:00 PM on the Green. There is a rain date, so that's Sunday, the 14th. So for those of you that are looking for that information there, that is. And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? My only comment is the prior town council members, that is, on our list of sort of things to figure out when we can have them come in, and we should really discuss when we can. Just didn't think it could be the very first meeting. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the town manager report. Matt?
Good evening, I just had a couple things real quick, I guess, really addressing Councilwoman Hall's questions to me.
Matt, can you just get closer? You're very soft-spoken, and not everybody can hear you. Thanks.
Thank you. My voice is going today, so. So in response to the school audit, that will be presented to the Board of Education. Obviously, they haven't had their first meeting yet, and so the school superintendent is going to get that taken care of, and then we'll figure out a date when they'll be going there. And I intend to go along with that presentation as well, so. Related to honoring the past council members, we are working on it. Obviously, we didn't know until that date when who was going to be here, who wasn't. I believe things are being ordered for that, so we're working on it. I had hoped it would be the next meeting, but I can't promise that. Probably check on that first thing tomorrow and see when that will be. That's all I can really comment on.
All right. Thank you. That was quick, huh? Town Attorney Report.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. First of all, want to offer sincere congratulations on your elections, to Mayor Sikala, Deputy Mayor Santinella, and all the other councilors. It's an honor for you to have been selected by the voters in the town of Enfield, and I wish you best wishes for much success in the best interests of the town and the people of the town of Enfield. And I'll be brief, but I did want to issue a brief statement tonight to tell you how much I've enjoyed, and it's been a privilege to serve as town attorney these past two years, and to support the business of the town of Enfield, a community in which I've been privileged to call home for many years. I also want to express my appreciation to the staff at the office of the town attorney. Their steady work and professionalism have been an important part of the town's legal operations, and it's been a pleasure to work alongside them for these past two years. With the recent election, I understand the council may consider changes going forward, and I just want to make it crystal clear that I'll assist fully in any transition the council decides upon. My priority is simply to ensure continuity and to protect the town's legal interests. I appreciate the opportunity to have served. the town's legal interests. I appreciate the opportunity to have served and stand ready to help with whatever next steps the council determines. So thank you for listening to me. In response to Councilman Zaccanoni's request, it's a great idea, and thank you. I will check with both State Representative Santinella and State Representative Hall, with whom I've had a good relationship over the past year since they've been serving down there. In addition to the new housing bill and the impact that may have on Enfield, my other notes I'd already made is to check with them on anything that may affect the town that concerns our public health, safety, and welfare and the impact on the town. So my thought is to eventually get ahold of John and Carol at, at their convenience and see what they can put together to educate me in terms of providing information to you as a council. And then perhaps you can make a determination where you want, whether you want to do it as a special presentation under, like, special guests or something like that. So it depends on, I guess, how much detail we want to go into and how much the impacts are. But there's no question, the housing looks like a major impact on the way zoning and housing has gone in the state of Connecticut. And of course, we know that all of our power in Enfield on zoning comes from the state, so they may be reeling it back in some, which appears to be the case. But most certainly, I'll, I'll look into that for the next meeting. I should have some information for you. And then the other thing is, we have one case that I wanted to update you on, the case where we have the recycling project in East Long Meadow that the town of Enfield took in a, an appeal on. And you'll recall that we hired a firm out of Boston who's excellent in this particular area. And so they filed an amended complaint. All our paperwork has been done, our meaning through them, and the suit is pending in Boston in Suffolk County. The town recently, and the appellant, or excuse me, the, the recycling project applicant did file their answers within the past week. So the next thing we're waiting for is simply for a return of the record and then the court to assign the next dates for whatever happens up there eventually to be a trial. I don't have specific dates right now to say six months or a year, but we would think that by Christmas, I would have a much better picture in terms of when it would come to fruition. So that's, that's the extent of it. The rest of the litigation we have going on with the town attorney's office has all been reduced substantially over this two-year period, and so we have no major cases that are, that are really pressing right now. So we're in pretty good shape. Okay, if anybody has any questions, I'm ready to answer anything?
Thank you. Any questions for the town attorney?
Good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Next is resports, report of special committees of the council. I assume there are none. Okay. Unfinished business, there is none. 13 new business, A consent agenda. There are five items on the consent agenda. Request for transfer of funds for the DUI grant, resolution for transfer of funds donated to FRC in the amount of $10,000, resolution regarding asset disposal over $6,000, request of transfer for auction funds for a purchase of a public works trailer in the amount of $6,500, and the resolution to enhance benefit coverage for eligible surviving spouses and families. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All right. By a show of hands, do we, do we have to do a motion to approve, right? A motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second.
First and second. Any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor? Any against? Any abstentions? 11 in favor, none against. Thank you. 13B, which is appointments, town council appointed. We have one, Enfield Beautification Committee. The term of Carolyn Sirdell expires on 12/1/2025. Reappointment would be on 12, until 12/1/2028. Do I have a motion to approve Carolyn Sirdell?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to close nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
And a second.
All right. All in favor of closing nominations, raise a hand. 11 in favor, none against. And do we have to do a roll call for Carolyn? Okay.
We have not been.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of Carolyn Sirdell, back on the beautification committee? Raise a hand. 11 in favor, none against. Thank you. And going on to item 13C, is resolution to authorize the submission of DEEP, Urban Grant, Green Grant Application. Whereas the Connecticut Department of Energy, Environment Protection, Connecticut DEEP, is authorized to extend financial assistance to municipalities in the form of grants. And whereas it is desirable and in the public interest for the town of Enfield to make an application to the state for $250,000 in order to facilitate the renovation of the Donald J., or Donald W. Barnes Boat Launch and execute an assistant agreement. Now therefore, be it resolved by the town council, one, that it is cognizant that of the town's grant application to the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to fund the renovation of the Donald W. Barnes Boat Launch, and two, that the filing for an application for the state financial assistance by the town of Enfield in the amount not to exceed $250,000 is hereby approved, and that the town manager, Matthew Coppler, or his designee, is directed to execute and file such applications with the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to provide such information, additional information, to execute such other document as may be required, to execute an assistance agreement with the state of Connecticut for financial, state financial assistance in such an agreement, if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the town of Enfield. Date prepared 11/6/2025 by Economic Community and Development.
So moved. Second.
Matt, anything to add on this?
The only thing I would add to that is regarding the match, we see a couple of different ways to go about with the match. One, obviously, is TIF funding, which there will be money available in the next few years for that. Second, we can put staff time into this that will count as in-kind contributions. And lastly, there may be some opportunities for other grants to go along with this.
Thank you. Any discussion? Questions for Matt? Sensing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Allegro?
Yes.
Mayor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Hall?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Matthews?
Four.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Thomas?
Four.
Counselor Angier?
Four.
And Counselor Zenoni?
Four.
11 in favor, none against.
Thank you. Item D, resolution authorizing the town to submit a community investment fund, CIF, application for the Enfield Annex. Whereas pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 32-285A, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development is authorized to extend financial assistance for economic development project, projects. And whereas it is desirable and in the public interest of the town of Enfield, make an application to the state for $5 million for work related to the Enfield Annex renovation, including HVAC fields and track, and to execute an assistant agreement. Now therefore, be it resolved by the town council, that one, it is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for the state financial assistance imposed by Connecticut General Statutes 32-285A, and two, that it, the filing of an application for the state financial assistance by the town of Enfield in the amount not to exceed $5 million is hereby approved, and that the town manager, Matt Coppler, or his designee, is directed to execute and file such applications with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to provide such additional information, to execute such other documents as may be required, to execute an assistance agreement with the state of Connecticut for state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the town of Enfield. Date prepared 11/6/2025 by the Economic and Development, Community Development.
So moved.
Second.
Matt, anything to add on this one before we?
Real quick, as I think most councils where we have a RFP out, seeking development proposals for portions of the annex, I think it's understood that there's going to be certain pieces of the annex that we're going to keep control of. Gymnasium, the pool, the auditorium, where recreation currently is, maybe a little bit more. I mean, again, I think depending upon what the development proposal that comes forward, if there is one, we'll, we'll have a lot to say about that. Saying that, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to that facility, as you're aware. We already have monies out there for roofing that needs to be done. Now we need to start looking at the HVAC, HVAC system there that needs updated, as well as the track and the athletic fields that are well beyond its useful life. And so this project is focused on the track, on the field, and those HVAC improvements necessary to keep that part of the, the facility up and running.
Thank you. I think on the same note, and this will probably happen sometime during the orientation, is that for some of the new councilors to go see the annex and some of the other buildings that we're talking about that are town-owned, and specifically point out, these are the, this is the area that we're talking about keeping, no matter really, so what happens regarding any RFPs that come back regarding the annex.
I also wanted to add, I forgot, looking down at my notes here. One of the requirements for the SIF funding is you do have to have public input into this. And so on December 3rd at 5:30 in the annex, and we do have a, a flyer which will be going out very shortly, we're going to be seeking that public input to talk about, you know, what, what can be done there, not only what we're proposing, but to get other ideas. Because I think if, if the RFP comes back with not very good options, you know, we're still left thinking, what are we going to do with this very large facility? And so we want to start that public engagement to get people thinking, what can be done there? And so this will be the start of that engagement. There'll probably be more later on. But to meet the needs of this particular funding request, we do need to get that on the books very shortly.
Thank you. And I think that the town manager, I think, and economic development both have Facebook pages. This would be something to push out on those Facebook pages.
Definitely.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Who wants to go first? Counselor Hall?
I'll go first. So being new to the council and getting this proposal, I obviously am very familiar with the annex and the work in needs done, which are millions of dollars. We all understand that. So I'm supportive of this project. I think we're going to need to address these things. And the more we can put on CIF at the state level, the less it comes out of the taxpayers' pocket directly. We all know it's the same, same pocket, however, it has a much more direct impact from our budgets. So that being said, I'd like to offer an amendment to this particular resolution to include in the CIF application, the institute. So as many of you may or may not know, the institute in Hazardville has gone for CIF funding numerous times and been passed over. They do, and they will apply once again for this round of CIF. And in my opinion, the more projects we can put in front of the state to take the burden off the local taxpayer, it only benefits our taxpayers in our town. So I would love to see the institute put on there. I talked with the, the mayor earlier about revisiting the police, the police station, and we're going to have a future conversation about that and what we can do with the new police station that the town passed in a referendum many years ago. So that'll be for a later discussion, but I would like to see the institute added, because once again, it takes the burden off the taxpayers directly. So I, I am looking to push that forward, that the council can support more than one project. If we were ready, I'd be putting the police station on this, too. I'd like to see all projects go. But the institute is ready. They have their application all set. And I think the other thing to keep in mind, for those that aren't familiar with the institute, we own that building. That is a town-owned building. The people that have been working on that building are volunteers, and the money that's been put into that building has almost all been raised by the volunteers that have been in place since the 70s. This group has been collaborating, raising funds, and working. So that being said, I'd love to see that added to the project, so.
I would second that. So can you, just for Sheila, what exactly is your amendment to 13D, so we can have it?
To add the institute as a town council to support that project as well as the Enfield Annex. So we'd be supporting both projects going forward as a town.
So, and that was your, that was your second, Marie? So I think, and I'll, I'll turn, I guess, to anybody at the more important table. How, how would that amendment go on because we don't have an, an amount and it, it was a separate item?
This resolution is written specific to the annex as far as the project's detail and the dollars. And the state, like, I know for a fact, after this resolution, if it passes tonight, there's a certification I have to do for the state in order for the grant to be submitted. And the certification has to include in the amendments, this, this exact verbiage, everything that you said, which I wouldn't have for the institute without having this all, you know, this whole section here would have to be written for the institute in order for me to, even for Aaron to apply.
So, so I think you, you wouldn't be able to do it as an amendment to this. You would need to add it to the agenda as a separate item to discuss. So that really is the motion that needs to be done, I think, rather than adding to this.
Okay.
I would, I, now as relates, I, I know we had everything put together. I don't know if I can find it that quickly, but.
You had, you had the institute information put together, you said?
Yeah, yeah, we have.
Because you presented it in leadership for us to support.
Yeah, we did have a resolution for that, yes. I just have to see if I can find it.
So does that, the motion for the amendment to this needs to come off the table then? Or because that's what she's saying, and then what you're saying is it would need to come on if they would want to as a separate item?
Yeah, I think.
Can I, if I could. So as I understand procedurally, we would need eight votes to add an item to the agenda because it's a separate resolution from what we have. So we would have to take care of this in any other business, item 15, introduce a separate resolution, ask for eight votes in favor of adding the resolution, which was part of leadership, which we took off of this agenda. So we'd have to re-add it back in, and then we would have to vote on that resolution. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And, and this amendment would need to be rescinded. So seeing that it's my amendment, let me ask this question. So what you're saying is you couldn't add on to this even though they're both CIF projects? The verbiage that the state requires me to certify, and I can't certify a resolution without the, the exact verbiage that the state gives us and approves to be part of the minutes. So without having that resolution in front of me and having So without having that resolution in front of me and having it read into the meeting, I don't have the language that the state is going to require in order to accept our application.
So, Sheila, you're saying that the language for this particular amendment comes directly from the state, is that what you're saying?
No, I think that Erin works with the dollars and the specifics of this project, but the state sends us this, almost this entire resolution, except with a certification statement for the town clerk to sign, which means this exact wording has to be in the minutes and has to be what was presented to the council for vote.
Okay, so if you need me to read that in as part of this, I can do that and just substitute the institute in along with the amount that they're applying for?
I'm going to defer to the town attorney, because I feel like I'm maybe above my pay grade here, but I know, yeah, I'll refer to the town attorney, the assistant town attorney.
A lot of these documents are drafted by DECD, correct? Are drafted by DECD, we have to comply with their stuff. I've never seen actually anything met added to their, although whereas is that the mayor was reading, that's plugged in by the state. If you're going to change that, I don't know if you can do it, maybe you can't, I don't know how DECD will react to that, and the people that are accepting the grant application. I don't have the grant in front of the application for me or the actual resolution, but I see like dollar amounts listed in there. You'd probably have to get into some serious detail about the dollar amounts, I mean, my thought would be is just, can you do this at the next meeting, a separate, okay, I'll defer to Matt on that one.
Mark, those whereases are part, because I did see the state's certified resolution already for this project, and the whereas is where it talks about the annex renovation, including HVAC fields, track, is part of what I have to certify, the whereas is a part of the certification.
But we do have that language, because Matt had it in leadership.
Okay.
Because...
Do you still have that?
Do I have it?
Do you?
I don't know if I have it, I know you have it.
Somewhere.
Because you presented it as the town wanting to push that project forward, and it was removed.
It was basically the same resolution, I think, that council had done last year.
Right.
And possibly the year before that. But I still think, though, that we can't amend this one, I think it has to be a separate resolution.
Okay.
I mean, that's the piece that we have to figure out.
Okay. So, I guess what I would say is I want to see it move forward in this round. So, when is the deadline that they have to have this in? Do we have another meeting before that happens?
No, my understanding is this was the meeting that we had to have these approved, submit it.
So we're going to miss it if we don't put it on this agenda?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm going to need language then to add it as an item to the agenda, so I'm going to have to ask for a recess at this point.
I think you need to first rescind your amendment, and then we'll need a second to rescind the amendment.
Okay.
And then if you are going to ask for recess, you would need to ask for recess, I think there has to be a second, and then we'd have to vote on it.
Okay.
And we do already have a motion, a resolution on the table here, we do have it for the annex project is already made and seconded.
Correct, I think we would probably need to finish that first.
So we need to finish that business.
Yep, that's fine. So I will remove my amendment.
Okay.
And look to put it on as a separate amendment.
Sure. Are you going to second removing the amendment first? Okay, okay, so now we're going back to discussion on the main motion. Go ahead.
Okay, so, to our mayor, to our town manager. So looking at this, I thought when, in a perfect world, the RFP went out for the annex, that we were going to be keeping the auditorium, I'm sorry, not the auditorium, the gym, the fields, the outside, like, the recreational portions, like, when you walked into those, into the annex, all the right would stay with us and the left would be sold. That's kind of what my interpretation of that was. So I guess I'm questioning why the auditorium, the recreation office, D Wing, why is that part of this? Why would we renovate something that we could be looking at selling?
Right, so we looked at it, you know, one, from the standpoint, so addressing the D Wing, which is the recreation offices, keeping recreation there, we would need that office space to keep the recreation department associated with the pool and the gymnasium. As it relates to the auditorium, the thinking with that was that that's a community space that can be utilized and possibly relieve some of the use at the schools that currently happens, and so we saw that as, again, a community asset that we wanted to keep.
All right, well, I just remember when I voted for the RFP to go out, I did not believe that that was part of it, because I thought the original plan was to have recreation move from there and be housed at another spot. I just think if we're going to keep all of that there, then I think we're limiting what we're bringing in as a potential buyer.
Well, I think...
That's my opinion. I thought we were just keeping gym, pool, outdoors. This is keeping a much bigger portion on the first floor than I thought we were keeping.
There was a lot discussed, I'll agree with you that, but I think the reality is, depending upon what happens with the RFP, because again, if it's something that everyone looks at and says, wow, we need to do this, we could be talking differently about the pool and the gymnasium as well, right? So I think you need to keep an open mind to whatever that RFP yields us, and potentially it yields nothing, potentially it yields a great idea that solves a lot of issues for us. So I think from my standpoint, you know, we would have to figure out then, if that RFP comes back and the additional space needed includes the recreation offices, then we have another issue of where we're going to put our recreation offices. And I think, you know, in some of our conversations, you know, there's another building very close to us that council has talked about in the past, and I think you had brought up that, you know, there's potential there, that if we get enough money out of that transaction, that we could look at, you know, acquiring other office space for recreation. So I think there's a lot of potential, and, you know, what I'm trying to do is protect the interests today of what we think could happen and what may not happen. I would much rather have the application in to the state and get that funding and not have to use it because we're getting rid of that portion of the building, but I think, again, you know, as a council, you haven't made a determination on that, and there really hasn't been a council conversation on the what-ifs.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Allegro.
Four.
Mayor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Hall.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Matthews.
Four.
Counselor Pisner.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Thomas.
Four.
Counselor Ungayar.
Four.
And Counselor Zanoni.
Four.
Eleven members in favor, none against.
Thank you.
That's okay, I appreciate it.
Go ahead, Councilor Hall.
So, instead of taking a recess, if I, I'll just put this on as an item for a new agenda item, so I, when we get to, yeah, so I'll add that then. Thank you.
All right, item E, resolution to appropriate funds for People-to-People, which is $13,000. Counselor... Oh, I'm not even on, sorry. Item 13E is a resolution to appropriate funds for People-to-People in the amount of $13,000. Counselor Mangini.
Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from Social Services, Community Initiatives, General Fund Transfers in 22046164-480001, $13,000. Two, Social Services, Community Initiatives, Enfield, People for People, 22046164-589207, $13,000. Date prepared 11/6/25.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Counselor Mangini. Any discussion? Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to say, Counselor Mangini, you've been the ultimate champion of this project, and, you know, we've all been very passionate about the Warming Center, and it's going to be a pleasure to finally get them their money, so I look forward to voting yes on this.
Thank you, hang on one second, Counselor Pisner.
Okay, so I'm going to support this tonight, but I'm going to ask through the mayor to the town manager that, moving forward, before our next budget cycle, that we go back to the pre-COVID era of bringing the nonprofits before us, so that we can look at what they're doing, how the money is being spent, who's on the board. There's also a part of our charter that states that any organization or committee that receives over $5,000 has to have a council member present as a liaison on their board.
I'll be it.
Okay, well, you're not right now.
No, well...
Okay, but I'm just saying, that's something that we have let go, and I think it's something that we need to take serious, it's part of our charter. This is one of the committees that nobody was ever invited to be on, nobody was ever asked to be part of their board. So I will support this tonight, but I would really appreciate moving forward to protect our taxpayers' dollars, that they do come before us during budget, and that we do have a liaison on the nonprofits. There are several of them that none of us have ever, ever been part of. I mean, there's one that I still can't get a real understanding of what they do, they're not even in Enfield. So, I am, everybody knows it, I'm conservative, I've said it, I'm cheap, call me frugal, but this is taxpayers' dollars here, and we should have an understanding of where our dollars are being spent and how they're being used. So, I'm fine with this passing tonight, but I am hoping moving forward, and I'm going to advocate for that during budget.
Thank you, Counselor Crisati.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, this is long overdue, this shouldn't even been a topic of conversation, so I'm very happy and proud to support People for People along with all of our other nonprofits. Being a member of Social Services over the past eight years, and being part of the process of nonprofits with their applications, I have sat down, I have read through all nonprofit applications, and had serious discussions with other council members in bringing this to the, in front of the council. You know, it's not like there's not a process that's involved. Our Social Service Department does a fantastic job of having a rubric that if council members did their homework, there's no discussions. And so, you know, we sit here over the past two years, and we've been listening to complaints that, whoa, these people should be coming in front of us. Well, we know the type of work that they do for our community, and we're familiar with what they do. And if the applications need to go in front of all council members after the committee has made their decisions, fine and dandy, but I don't find it a need where you have to have a committee come up and grovel in front of us for funds. That's my own opinion, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crisati. Counselor Mangini?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Sikala, for allowing me the honor of reading this resolution. And thank you, Deputy Mayor Santinella, for the wonderful, kind words that you spoke. It is extremely important that we respect, honor, and care for members of our society, our Enfield community, who are less fortunate. This is what we're here for, we are members of our town, we are human beings, and it is our role to look out, and Counselor Crisati said it very nicely, our Social Service Department does a stellar job. I sat on that committee how many years ago, I mean, 20 years ago, maybe, but the fact of the matter is, I'm extremely happy that this little bit of money is going to maybe help them out to some degree, and we can prevent, you know, people from being cold. And thank you, Monica, and all of your team members that are helping our guests in time of need, it's extremely important, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mangini. Counselor Hall?
So, with respect to what Counselor Crisati said, I think the benefit to having all the nonprofits come in front of us during the budget process itself is how it used to be done, and it was never to quote-unquote grovel for funds, because what it, we used it for, and it was a good tool for, was to get the information out on those nonprofits. So, these meetings are televised, they're discussed, they're in minutes, so I think it gives the nonprofits an opportunity to talk about what they do for the town. Not everybody out there knows what they offer, what they do, I think it's a great opportunity for them to come forward and kind of just give an overview of what their organizations do and how it benefits the town, like they all do. So, I think it's truly a great idea to go back to when Scott Copan was mayor, we used to sit with all the nonprofits on one day of the budget, and we used to have the ability to go through and talk to them, and really, it was a learning curve, I think, for a lot of us and for a lot of the community. So, I would love to see us go back to that model where we can actually, you know, kind of educate our community on what we actually put out there in services. So, that being said, I'm hoping we will relook at that during budget. I think this really, truly needed to be funded, and I will be happy to support it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ungayar?
Quickly, I just wanted to say it's having a good transparency, and for the public to hear, they could even contribute, and you can network and come up with new ideas, so I think it's a good idea. I support it.
Thank you. Any further discussion, comments? Counselor Zanoni?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to concur with Counselor Hall as well as Counselor Ungayar, I think there is a unique benefit, I'm glad to support this motion tonight, towards having any organization which utilizes taxpayer dollars to come before the council, we have public services, such as the Social Services Committee, the police have subcommittees, we don't relegate the authority of 11 members of this body towards individual members of this council and make financial decisions on behalf of all of us, I think there's a unique benefit to it. I'm incredibly proud of the work that all of our nonprofits do, they serve an important cause, they're somewhat quasi-governmental purposes. I think with that in mind, there's a benefit for all 11 of us to have input on anything that results in the spending of our money and our taxpayer dollars, thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, I am happy this is on the agenda, and I am happy to see that there's going to be 11 votes for, so roll call, please.
Counselor Allegro.
Four.
Mayor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Hall.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Matthews.
Four.
Counselor Pisner.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Thomas.
Four.
Counselor Ungayar.
Four.
And Counselor Zanoni.
Four.
Eleven members in favor, none against.
Thank you. Item F, Board of Education and Teachers Association Contract. What is G? We're on F.
We're on F.
Comes before G in the alphabet. All right. Whereas pursuant to Connecticut general statutes, Section 10-153A through 10-153G, the Enfield Board of Education has negotiated and approved a collective bargaining agreement with the Enfield Teachers Association covering salaries, hours, and other conditions of employment for certified teaching staff, and whereas the Board of Education has submitted the agreement to the Enfield Town Council as the legislative body and fiscal authority for consideration as required by law, and whereas the Enfield Town Council has reviewed the terms of the agreement and its financial impact on the town's budget. Now therefore be it resolved by the Enfield Town Council that the collective bargaining agreement between the Board of Education and the Enfield Teachers Association, effective July 1, 2026 through June 30, 2029, is hereby approved as submitted, and the town clerk is directed to record this resolution and maintain a copy of the approved agreement in the official records of the town. Date prepared 11/13/2025. By Matthew Coppeler, Town Manager.
So moved.
Second.
Motioned first and seconded. Any discussion? Councillor Pisner.
So I'm going to agree to this contract tonight, but I have to say, for the last few years, we've been hearing about how we want to obtain the best and the brightest teachers. And looking at this contract, it's really just funding the top level of teachers. It's not really doing much to bring in the best and the brightest of young teachers. So I wasn't on the negotiating. I'm not allowed to be on the negotiating. It's the union that does it. I still think there's a really huge gap between your top layer and your younger teachers. I would have liked to seen that gap a little closer, honestly, and I think it could have been done. But when you look at the amount, you've got, you know, the top is the 239 teachers, and then below that is 207, probably even a little less. So if I was a young teacher in a neighboring town, you know, again, if we want to attract it, this was the opportunity for our teachers to attract younger, brighter teachers by giving them a little bit more and maybe them holding back a little bit. But that's not the way it turned out, so.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, just, so as I understand it, this contract was approved by a vast percentage of the teachers in the union, and though I don't necessarily disagree with Councillor Pisner's comments on some of this, I -- the union members themselves have unanimous, have in large number approved what's before us. And I have some of the same reservations, but I think that our other options at this point are pretty limited, and I do plan to support this. So thank you.
Any further comment on the -- I would just say that I don't disagree with Councillor Pisner's, some of her concerns and comments, but none of us were in those negotiating rooms. And while I don't agree that, you know, sort of perhaps bumping up to attract younger, newer teachers isn't a bad thing, I also think having a district who is supported by their legislative and financial body is also a wonderful way to attract new talent and teachers and staff. So this will be a budget implication, so I want people to make sure they're paying attention, but I will absolutely support it. So roll call, please.
Councillor Allegro.
Abstain.
Mayor Sikala.
Four.
Councillor Crisati.
Abstain.
Councillor Hall.
Four.
Councillor Mangini.
Four.
Councillor Matthews.
Four.
Councillor Pisner.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Santinella.
Four.
Councillor Thomas.
Four.
Councillor Ungary.
Four.
Councillor Zanoni.
Four.
That's nine in favor, none against, and two abstentions.
Thank you. Now moving on to G, request to appropriate supplemental municipal revenue sharing grant to Shaker Pines Fire District. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from general funds, the supplemental municipal revenue sharing in the amount of $100,000, to non-departmental charges, transfers out in contingencies, miscellaneous expenditures, $100,000. Certification, I hereby certify the above stated funds or below stated funds are available as of November 13, 2025 by John Wilcox, Director of Finance. Date prepared 11/13. By John Wilcox.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Do we want to just sort of briefly say what this is about? I don't -- are we good? Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, so these are funds that were granted to the fire districts to help with their expenses during consolidation. And in the budget process, it was -- it should have been allocated to the Shaker Pines Fire Department, but the funds were actually sent to the town of Enfield. And the town manager has a letter sort of explaining that these funds were going to be received and that they were intended to be part of the consolidation effort. Shaker Pines, it's going to Shaker Pines because Shaker Pines is doing the financial management for the entire consolidation process for the four fire districts that are in the process of trying to consolidate. And that's why it's going to Shaker Pines and not the other districts. And so that's what this is.
Thank you. Sure. Councillor Pisner.
So to the mayor, to the town manager, have we received those funds yet from the state?
Yes, we received them right after October 31st.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Since none, roll call, please.
Councillor Allegro.
Four.
Mayor Sikala.
Four.
Councillor Crisati.
Four.
Councillor Hall.
Four.
Councillor Mangini.
Four.
Councillor Matthews.
Four.
Councillor Pisner.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Santinella.
Four.
Councillor Thomas.
Four.
Councillor Ungary.
Four.
And Councillor Zanoni.
Four.
Eleven in favor, none against.
Thank you. Item 14, items for discussion, there is none. And item 15, any other business proper to come before said meeting? Councillor Hall.
So I am not going to ask for a break because we probably don't have the votes to add an item to the agenda, but I would like to add an item to the agenda to add the institute to our CIF endorsements as a council. And I think one thing that I want to --
Wait, can I just pause you so we can get a second first, and then -- wait a second?
Second.
Okay. I don't want to cut you off, but I want to make sure that we do it the right way because now you're testing my ability to know Robert's rules. So we have a first and a second to put an item on the agenda, and I don't want to cut her off, and I want to allow her to talk, but do we have to vote on it going on to the agenda first, or can we discuss it first?
I believe that we vote to add the item to the agenda first, but I -- Mark, do you agree? Because we would have to vote to add the item before we can discuss it.
Right. And I guess I just, I don't want to not allow you to talk.
Yeah, you can discuss the motion if Councillor Hall, right.
So we'll discuss it first, and then we'll do the vote to add it to the agenda.
And then do the vote to add it, and then vote on the item as added.
Because I don't think we'll get to the next step, so go right ahead. Yeah.
So I guess the one point I want to make is many towns, probably a majority of the towns in the state of Connecticut, submit multi-projects under the CIF process. So if you look and you go to the state's website, you will see the towns that submit, some submit up to six or seven projects. And the reason they do this, again, is it saves the town taxpayer. So instead of us funding out of our budget line item, we are getting funded by the state of Connecticut for these large, enormous projects. So the more you can throw at the wall, if you will, sometimes one will stick. So I would love to see the project, the town manager had the institute prepared for us in leadership. It was an item that he was going to suggest we file for. So I would love to see it added to the agenda, and that's my spiel.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, so by hand vote. Roll call, okay. So we'll do a roll call for adding this item to the --
To add the item to the agenda.
-- Hazardville Institute CIF grant item to the agenda. Thank you.
Councillor Allegro.
Four.
Mayor Sikala.
Against.
Councillor Crisati.
Against.
Councillor Hall.
Four.
Councillor Mangini.
Against.
Councillor Matthews.
Against.
Councillor Pisner.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Santinella.
Against.
Councillor Thomas.
Against.
Councillor Ungary.
Four.
Councillor Zanoni.
Four.
That's five in favor and six against.
Thank you. Any other business proper to come before said meeting? Sixteen, Public Communications.
Wendy Osada. Is this on or off? It's on. Wendy Osada, Eight Windmore Road. It won't even take me that long. Councillor Mangini, based on your comments about the being slow, about going through school areas, I just wanted to say, I live near JFK. I probably pass that school in both directions 10 to 20 times a week, and it drives me crazy because I don't know why. People should know the speed limit is only 25 miles an hour in front of any school, but the speed limit signs at JFK in both directions are very small. Now, the new technology in cars, my car, for example, is as you pass a speed limit sign, the speed limit flashes on your dashboard right next to how fast you're going, or vice versa, how fast you're going, and then what the speed limit is. And the signs are so small for the 25 miles an hour at JFK that my car does not register that the speed limit has gone down from 35 to 25. It still says it's 35 all the way past JFK. So I don't know if there's some reason why the signs at the schools can't be a certain size, but with the new technology, thinking about it, it's just even, you know, another added way to try to increase safety measures at schools if we make sure that the speed limit signs at schools in both directions are large enough that they now will get picked up by this new technology, just because people could be daydreaming, they may not realize where they are, and just having that stinkstart flashing at you at your, you know, on your dashboard is a really good reminder that, ooh, I should be going slower. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Mr. Cremona.
Hi, Tom Cremona, 19 Tyler Road. I apologize for not coming up earlier. Amy grew across the street from me, so it was a little tough time at that point. The issue is very small, but it was, I was advised that this was something that I needed to bring to the council. The subject is leaf collection. Just as a reminder of the way that works, it's great. It's a great service. If your trash collection is on Monday, you become the first week of the leaf collection, and then so on and so forth. For those of us that live in that section where trash collection is on Mondays, that means we're always first. And as great as it is, half of the leaves are still up in the tree at that time. And so it's great, but a lot of us still have to do a lot of trips to the pantry station with the rest of the leaves. So my suggestion is, believe it or not, again, I was advised now is the time to bring this to you because it's fresh of mind, is whether or not that schedule could be rotated on an annual basis so that if it was trash week one on Mondays this year, then it would be second next year, third the year after, and so on and so forth, just as a way for spreading out the penalty of being first. And it is as simple as that. So if there's any questions, I'll answer them, but that's all I had for you tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, and congratulations to all of you. I know it was an interesting election. So I'm ready to support whatever thing you need. A phone call away if you need me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for -- come on up here.
Pam Townsend, 54 Kimberly Drive. So since we're on the public safety kick here, the other day I witnessed almost an accident. I was at the, on Middle Road next to the jug shop, and a truck coming off of Hazard to turn onto Middle Road almost drove straight on into the car that was sitting next to me at the signal light, okay? I was in the right lane, they were in the left lane. And he got in, he got, almost hit the car. He didn't know what to do. The lights changed, traffic started to move, he's stuck in the middle of the road. I know Hazard Ave is a state road, but is there any way to put arrows or lane directions to get people to go around that little island that's right there? I've seen cars miss that corner a couple of times, but the other day, it almost became a head-on collision. And if there's any way possible to help cars go better, go through there better, it'd probably be a good idea. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam. Any other public communications? All right. Councillor Communications. Deputy Mayor.
Through the mayor to the town manager, just to follow up on Mr. Cremona's comments, I'm a Tuesday person, so week two, right? But I do, it, the weather's changing, right, and leaves are later. Is there something that we can, can we talk to our Director of Public Works and just see either, maybe the rotation's an idea, but is there a way that we can get a final week of collection in at the end? I don't know if that's even feasible, but just to help out people who are early in the cycle, if you could, that would be, that'd be great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I actually thought that they went around more than once.
They do, but it's still the first, it's still the first week.
Okay, okay. I thought they went around a couple of times, so I guess I was wrong. So before we adjourn, I just want to wish everybody Happy Thanksgiving, Happy Turkey Day, and Wendy, if you have information regarding the nonprofit that you may want to filter through to see if we can put it on a Facebook page for the town manager or something like that, if that's something we can do, send it our way. All right? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I may.
All right, all in favor? Any against? I don't think so. Eleven in favor. Thank you.